All right, let's call the lawyer. This is City Health and Workshop in South Philly. I have to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Scott Trumbull?
Here, on time.
Vice Mayor William Dimmer? Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell?
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary?
Here.
Councilman Tom Consella?
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew?
Here.
City Manager Leonard Sossman?
Here.
Let the record show that Carl Roth, Chairman of the PAB, Chris Leeds, Member of the PAB, and Ron Bedova, Member of the PAB, is present tonight.
What I'd like to do is kind of go out of water. We'll start with council business, which is going to be the discussion in the workshop, and then we'll reserve on comments for the end. Is that okay for everybody? Okay. So, at this point, let's move on to council business, and I want to turn it over to our Port Authority Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would encourage that if you have any questions as we go, really interrupt. That's why we wanted to make sure we had plenty of time for you all as part of this, because there's a lot of information, and wanted to make sure as we go through it, there was a good handle on what we had brought to the table. This is really a summation of our efforts around the dredging effort. So, we were originally tasking us with this back in February. We've worked on it. We tried to give you some preliminary information, some interim checkpoints. This is really the culmination of everything that we know right now, and there are some things coming up that you may want to be involved with, so the critical, the timing is critical at this point. So, what we did, in parallel with this, when we started out, there was a waterway safety initiative. So, there was actually some synergies that we didn't really see at first that really came to play as we were doing our due diligence. So, there's some recent information on the waterway safety side we'd like to bring up at the end of the meeting, if that's okay and acceptable.
Before we go any further, if you're going to be at the podium, the mask is going to be optional, because you're pretty far spaced from everyone.
No problem. If you can hear me, I would prefer to leave it on.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to give you that option, because if we're spaced out, I want to give you that option if you're speaking.
No problem.
Okay.
Fortunately, I project fairly well, so if I get tired at the end, let me know. So, what we learned during this process was that dredging, as we were looking at it, was really one-dimensional. We need to dredge, let's go get a contract, let's get the dirt out of the canal, and let's move on. But what we started to see is that folks are really starting to look at these things as more multi-dimensional. There's more pieces to the equation than what we may have originally perceived when we started this effort back in the 2005 or so timeframe. We also learned that by looking at it in a more of a multi-dimensional way, there is more diverse source of both public and private funding available. So, that was important, because one of the log jams we ran into all along in this effort is where's the funding coming from? So, that was first and foremost in what we were looking at. The other thing that we found with all of this different funding, in the government sector, you may realize this already, but it becomes more highly collaborative. There's multiple entities. If you're dealing with federal entities, if you're dealing with state entities, if you're dealing with trust organizations, everybody has their piece in the game. So, it gets more complicated and can be a more challenge, a greater challenge to manage. However, what we thought, and what we've seen in some of the examples, is that the entity, and say, for example, our city, if we can package this on what's important to us and what we really want to accomplish, we think that's the right way to go about it, pulling all of these multiple dimensions in, because we can achieve a lot more and be much more effective and get much more community engagement if we can do that. So, what we saw as part of this is that we kind of changed how we wanted to look at this. So, instead of just dredging, we're really looking at restoration and resiliency as really the key drivers, because what those do is pull in a lot more funding and give us a lot more abilities and flexibility to do what we may want to downstream. So, moving on to page two. Based on the original dredging requirements, we followed kind of a typical path. Go get permits, get the permits approved, let's get a quote on what it's going to take to do, and that was a question for some time, and then determine how we're going to fund it. So, where we stopped previously was how we were going to allocate those costs to the community. So, now, near as, we understand that Restore Act has provided some funding for us to do some initial work, if, as we choose. As part of the investigations, we discovered that it does not seem to be a unified cohesive strategy from the state, county, cities, or business community, and how to effectively leverage Pasco's coastal and estuary resources for our community's highest and best use. This really became a foundational element in our assessment. And why? Because if there's not an economic driver, you have to ask the question from a business perspective, why are we doing it? So, we were really surprised when we talked to Dave Engel, who's the Director of Economic Development at the county, there was not really a vision of what our coast and what our waterways can do for our community, and that was frankly, pretty shocking. So, that became an underpin for everything that we did and how we looked at things moving forward, and I think a real important component. So, as part of that, we saw that there's three primary funding buckets that we can get to. One is dredging, and we pursued that course. Another one is around restoration, we pursued that course. And the third area was around resiliency. And each one of those buckets get bigger as you start looking at it, the smallest being dredging, the largest being resiliency. So, if you want funds, that's how you march down the path. So, uh, excuse me. So, restoration and resiliency became key catchwords in everything that we saw when we talked at the state level or at the feds' level. You start using those words, that's what they get. That's what they understand. Dredging is a secondary, tertiary word in what they're doing. After everything else, it becomes part of your solution, but it's not the lead initiative if you want to get big things done. So, with that, let us walk you down the path of how our learning came about. So, if you move to page three, what you have there is a bunch of pictures, but that's really Pasco County, Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie, kind of the resources we have available to us. And what we saw here was that, as you know, we have a number of park resources available to our community, the county and Newport Ritchie have the same. What was surprising to us is that we are losing the opportunity to get repeat tourism, repeat customers in. If you go to Brasher Park and you use that facility, there's nothing to tell you that Olsoner is here, Nix is here, Anklot's there, Warner Boys is over here. So, being able to bring people back again and again and again is really what drives an economic model for a community. So, this is a major lost opportunity to not only us, but the county and Newport Ritchie as well. And I would say that, at least from our meetings, we don't think anybody really gets it yet. So, there's the opportunity for us. The other part of this is our businesses don't have any information as well, because we, as a governmental entity, don't look at it this way. Businesses don't either. So, if you have a charter business or a restaurant business, if their people are coming by boat, they don't know there's these other opportunities available to them for expenditures for fuel, ice, provisions, and those other things. So, that was another key piece of this whole economic component. So, what we thought here, the big change was, we needed to package whatever we were going to do. We need to make sure it was approached in an economically beneficial way, and that it impacted positively the entire community. So, those were our tenants as we move forward. So, on page four, kind of our additional learnings here. So, I mentioned the three levels that we went through as far as dredging, restoration, and resiliency, and the funding buckets that correlated to that. So, this is kind of where we started, and we spoke with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, John Suggs, who's the head of their Small Harbors Initiative, and also John Campbell at, this all out of Jacksonville District. And basically, they were very helpful and supportive, and basically shared with us that if we wanted to do some type of planning effort that were probably passed, they would joint fund that at a 50-50 level. So, if you did a $50,000 study, they would contribute $50,000 into that, or study, to do a total of $100,000. If you did some work, what I consider the actual dredging work, or moving of sand, or any of that type of stuff, they'll split it at a 75-25 split, 75% from the Army Corps, 25% from the customer, i.e. the city, all right? To a $10 million maximum, all right? So, that means that they'll contribute up to $10 million, and then, so the total spend could be, yeah, 13 and 1/2, or somewhere in that order for a complete project. That's what the Army Corps would do. And so, that was insightful. But then we moved on, and, because we started talking about seagrass. And one of the things that's occurred in our channels, particularly the main channel going out, there's shoaling that's occurred because the sand has moved. So, we were talking with the Army Corps about, hey, do you guys consider utilizing seagrass to stabilize this? So, if we did this, and we did an overdredge, we wouldn't have to do this ever again, because the soils would be stabilized, it wouldn't be exposed, prop cuts and all of those types of things. Army Corps typically does that in a remediation, not necessarily as a proactive, but what we did find is that the Crystal River Restoration Effort are really leading with seagrass. And because of the problems that they had with algae up in Crystal River caused by the hurricanes and other things, the cloudiness of the water, they started an effort there utilizing seagrass to clarify the water. It drove their cleaning out of their canals by dredging, and then coming back in with the seagrass to stabilize that and clean the water. And I have a video here that I think Sal can, a couple of videos that Sal can show us to kind of talk about this. So, go ahead, Sal, get her started. But the important part is, is that the state has contributed over $17.5 million for this effort.
Just to Crystal River?
Just to Crystal River, for restoration. And also, they've got $315,000 from Citrus County, and they got $513,000 through fundraising, and another $130,000 through donations and grants. And these come from multiple entities out there. So, they've got a cumulative amount of almost $19 million for their efforts. Been going on about five years.
Anything from the Army Corps?
I'm not sure. I don't have an answer on that one. We may see something in the video, but I don't recall anything offhand. But they have contractors that are working with them, but the interesting part, the large tranche of funding came from the state legislature. And as you probably know, Wilt Simpson, who's rising up, was key, and you'll see him here, as part of getting that funding. So, go ahead.
Okay, now, we're going to be displaying on this way, that way, and we're watching the video. I feel like it's taking.
We thought this would be helpful, because it shows the enthusiasm, its engagement in the community, it shows the difference that they've made.
Can you guys see? Is it blurry, or are my glasses off? Oh, there it is, okay.
There you go.
Thanks.
Florida's coast and waterways are at a crossroads. A new port lay for a crossroads with the algae problem on Florida's coast, and waterways are at a crossroads. Our coast and our waterways are said to be at a crossroads. I'm sorry to some Florida, now I want your ideas on how to fight the problem from growing, from growing. When this project started, there was some skepticism whether it could really work or not. What I'm astonished by is that we're only five years in, and the results are spectacular. There is eelgrass everywhere, it's spreading all over Kings Bay, and wherever that eelgrass goes, the water is clearer. It stabilizes the sediment on the bottom of the bay, it makes it harder for the algae to appear, and we're starting to see Crystal River as it's supposed to be. We're really seeing a lot more manatees here in summer now, which impacts our tourism economy, because now, instead of just having a winter manatee season, we're really transitioning at this point into a year-round manatee season, because there's enough food in the bay now to sustain a population of at least 100 manatees, year-round.
When you look at the grass that's growing, the seagrass that's growing on the bottom there, the eelgrass, it's amazing to see how it's spreading through nature and through natural sources. It's really amazing to see this on this scale, and what the future, the next eight or 10 years will hold for this area. When folks come to me about six or seven years ago initially, and started talking about money to clean up the limbia and replant the eelgrass, we did have some naysayers. We had people saying, well, this will never work. The proof's in the pudding here. You know, it has been successful, it's being successful, and that success should help drive more resources.
We're only seeing the small effects from what has been done so far. What we're hopeful about is that all of Kings Bay can be restored, and I think that that is a real possibility now, if the state has the will to continue this project and reclaim one of the gems of Florida.
I go into the classrooms to talk to the children about why, say, Crystal River is trying to clean up the river. So, at Crystal River Primary, for the past four, this is the fourth year, Duke Energy has supplied eelgrass, so every student in the whole entire school gets to plant a little section of eelgrass in their classroom aquarium. They get to watch it from December until May, and then they go to Hunter Springs and plant it. So, what an opportunity, because they get to plant it. So, the group this year in fifth grade has been growing eelgrass for four years, so they know it, they see the difference, they know how clean it is.
The results are unbelievable. They're better than I ever would have hoped for. We have a guy called a limnologist that comes back, he's an independent, kind of an underwater biologist, and he does a study every year. It was like 75% improved, both in the number of species that have come back into the area, but also in the volume of individual creatures, all the way down from the microscopic bugs that live on the, in the algae of the plant leaves, on up the food chain, all the way to ultimately to the manatees. And every year, he does a report, every year it's better, and all you have to do is look out in the water to see that. The blue crabs had almost been completely wiped out, because they had no cover. Now, the blue crabs are back, the mangro尺是 are back, all other varieties, bait fish are back in the river, and again, it's all because of the crabs. I go out in the water just about every day, I've seen major changes, still keep up the good work.
It's working!
It's absolutely beautiful.
It's working.
Keep up the great work.
Through this project, I'm really excited that my daughters are going to grow up to see this beautifully restored ecosystem and healthy habitat, and know that one small community can make a really big difference in the environment.
I think that we're all to something here, and I know we've got three, four, or five more years to finish cleaning up that area. This, to me, feels like more of a model for the rest of the state, for the rest of the state, for the rest of the state.
For Florida's ocean and coast, this is an all-hands-on-deck moment.
Some of the ones short, but it had some good pieces.
The waters here are changing. What was, just a few weeks ago, dark and impenetrable, is today clearer, cleaner, brighter. Workers have been busy removing an invasive algae called limbia from the bottom of the canals that feed Kings Bay. The algae, which is dark and slimy, was preventing the flow of fresh water from the springs, and smothering native plants that provide food and shelter for all kinds of wildlife. But now, thanks to a pilot program being implemented in Kings Bay, limbia is on its way out. In less than eight weeks, 74 spring beds have been cleared, and more than 8,000 cubic yards of limbia have been removed, enough to fill 4,000 pickup truck beds to the brim. Removing the algae is a good first step, but limbia is aggressive and could easily repopulate the canals if the project stopped here. That's why the next steps are so important for long-term success. Meet Volusneria americana. It's a fancy name for a very simple, unassuming native plant that's more commonly known as tape grass or eelgrass. Tape grass is the perfect habitat for fishing crabs, and a good source of food for manatees, turtles, and birds. This particular strain of grass is nicknamed Rockstar, because it outperforms other types of grasses. Aquaculture experts are planting Rockstar along the bottom of the canals. It's first seeded and grown in special mats and peat pots, to make sure its root structures are developed. Then the mats and pots are planted in the water and surrounded by specially-designed cages that protect it while its roots get established. The healthier the tape grass, the healthier the springs, and in turn, the entire ecosystem. And that's welcome news to residents and business owners here who make their living on the water. Like so many other towns and cities in Florida, water is the lifeblood of this community. Crystal River has been designated an Outstanding Florida Waterway and a National Wildlife Refuge. Fishermen depend on Crystal River for fishing and crabbing. Hotels and restaurants rely on tourists visiting Citrus County to swim, scuba dive, kayak, paddleboard, and of course, see the manatees. In fact, 300,000 people visited Citrus County in 2014, boosting the local economy by more than $175 million. In Florida, nothing is more important than protecting the water, not only for today, but for future generations who will live, work, and play here.
That economic reporting is really important, because the state is just grasping what the coastal area of the state brings to the table. Basically, 80% of our revenue and 80% of our population lives along the coast. So, they're starting to come to the realization that they need to take better care and do more things about that. So, we're front and center on that, and so we think we ought to try to leverage that as well as we can. Another component here that we were talking about had to do with, in their case, they had the challenges with the algae, the blue green algae up there, and also they had some septic-type issues as well that they had to care for. There's those type of issues that Pasco County's dealing with up in Hudson, we've had some problems out in Brasher, also down in Gulf Harbors as far as sanitary issues due to spills and that type of thing. But I think, for the most part, from anything that we've seen, the Cody hasn't had those problems specifically. Been close, but not, not here. But stormwater is a, is a key component that needs to be addressed, because if we don't take care of the stormwater issues as we dump things back into the canals that we just dredged, we're not really going to make any progress going forward. So, it's important to note that stormwater standards have only been around since approximately the 1980s. Prior to that, it was just enough to get rid of the water, don't worry about it, it's gone, okay? The premise in the 80s was, if we clarified that water before we dumped it into our water bodies, things would be much better. But I was just on a call with some folks at the state level, and there are new studies and new looks being done, that the traditional way, since 1980, of looking at stormwater has not been effective in clarifying the water. Why that's important is that Swift Mud, Pasco County, nobody really has any good measures of water quality in the Cody River Estuary. There are some samples that have been done, we've looked at the data out of the Anklot River and out of the Cody River. They are random samples, they aren't really geared to take a look at what kind of leakage we may be having, what kind of problems are occurring after rain when there's a big flush that comes out from the stormwater system. None of that data's available, so we're kind of flying blind. They've only captured the information since about 2000. Had conversations with Anastagio and, can't find his name offhand, but at Swift Mud, and they're interested in doing something, if other folks are so inclined as well. So, we also spoke with Alan Bitacom at Pasco County to understand what they were doing with the Magnolia Valley issue, as far as that flooding that kind of dumps into our backyard. And as far as we know right now, they, that project is in limbo. They don't have any clear direction. There was talk about going north of us, there's still conversation about coming into us, but that issue is, is out there and needs to be considered. But, so those areas kind of address our restoration. The next, as we move in, we start getting more towards our resiliency level. And what we found out was that there are areas, the National Flood Insurance Community Rating System, if you're familiar with that, Pasco County has a six in their rating, and Port Ritchie has a seven. What that translates to be is that we get a 15% discount on our flood insurance, and Pasco County gets a 20% discount on their flood insurance. And we thought, what we found out was that there are small communities like Juno Beach and Ponce Inlet that are similar to our size, and they're getting 25% discount. So, if you've got a $6,000 a year policy that you're paying for flood insurance, that's $600 a year in your pocket if you have to have flood insurance. So, we're underperforming in Port Ritchie, and Pasco County is underperforming as well as far as helping their community and their citizens get all the discounts that they could. So, that's an important piece. The other thing, we spoke with, from a bond rating perspective, we were talking to the financial institutions. So, what we found through this resiliency area was that financial institutions are going to be reevaluating how they issue bonds to municipalities, counties, and what have you. If those communities are at risk over a reasonable timeframe, and they're trying to rebuild, or they're trying to get a bond amount for some type of infrastructure development, they're considering the impact on storm damage and other type of catastrophes, and what loans, the amount of loans, what rates you're going to get. And we had some conversation with folks in the banking community, and said, that's a real thing. It's not just make-believe. And not only does it affect the city, but it also affects me as a residential, so if my home gets blown down, and I'm trying to rebuild, I may not get as good a rate, or I may not get all that I want, because financial institutions are going to hold back, because my community's at risk, and it's not a good place to go, from their perspective, based on what they know. And the same thing applies in the business community. If you're looking for business loans or things like that to expand your business, same thing applies, holding the money back. So, if you're looking at a financial horizon of 10 years, 20 years, or 30 years, if you don't believe you're going to get your monies back, you're going to be less inclined to make that loan or at the rates that you're looking for. So, that was an important piece that we came across as well. There are a number of issues that are, or a number of initiatives that are going on across the state right now. And basically, FDEP is, is driving some of those. There's, Clearwater just completed their adaption plan in 2018, and Fort Lauderdale completed theirs a little bit earlier, St. Augustine, and Escambia County has also undertaken efforts. But there are key components there that the state is looking for, but what we've seen from what they've been doing, it's been kind of slow. Nobody's moving really quick. So, for example, down in Fort Lauderdale, that's had the longest lead time, they got Shanghai'd by a $1.4 billion sanitary sewer rebuild because of the water encroachment. This was put on them by, I think at the federal level, the Clean Water Act. So, none of their efforts around, what do I need to do to really get my community going, has been able to get done, because there's this thing, that $1.4 billion... has been able to get done because there's this thing, $1.4 billion hanging over their head on what they need to do. So in conversations I've had with folks down in Fort Lauderdale, their perspective is that's going on from the city of Fort Lauderdale in dealing with resiliency or restoration in their community because they don't see it. And let's see. So the other piece that I think is important here is that from adaptive investments today assure longer-term viability and reduce restoration costs and accelerate economic recovery. So what that means is that for every dollar you spend to kind of protect your turf, it saves you four to six times later. And it also accelerates the amount of time, the amount of time it takes to get back on your feet. So if some type of disaster occurred, that seems to be a really strong push from the insurance community and the financial sector is if you can recover faster. So those dollars that you spend in the front end to protect help you in the longer term, and it's viewed favorably in the broader community. So let me kind of share what we've also learned in the Port Ritchie levels. This is all great and fine at the top. So I think everybody's familiar with the Port Ritchie flood map, that we're in a special flood hazard zone and inherently we're at great risk of flooding. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, but if you move on to page six, what we did was kind of look at, what you may not be familiar with is how our city developed. And if you, we were established in 1925, and the core part of the city was really part of the waterfront overlay district and the area on the south side of the river. That was all that really existed in any degree up until the post-war period. So that infrastructure was built in that 1925 timeframe. Then you go and it extended down towards Moonlight Bayou in 1952 in that area, and this was all based on the University of Florida aerials as far as how the city developed. And then it moves on a little bit further north in Millers Bayou, '57 timeframe, around toward Harbor Isles, and then Harbor Isles filled out in '68, then you have swash towards '19 in the '70s, Sand Pebble in the '80s, and then Harbor Point in the '90s, and then finally Akila in the '20s. So that's kind of how we developed, and all your infrastructure is based in those timeframes. So what we did was we had the benefit that the city of Clearwater basically got their recent information as far as how sea level rises changed. So during the 20th century, it increased at a certain rate, so we brought it up to 2020. And in the period from 2000 to 2020, the historical rate doubled in our area, doubled. So that brought these numbers there, the inches below that is how much that water level has changed since that subdivision or that development was put in place. This impacts, we don't have anybody from the drainage department, we have the building folks here, but if you lose that amount of fall, it's going to substantially impact your ability to care for your community. So the important piece is, over the next 20 years, it's supposed to increase another eight and a half inches, and the 20 years after that, another 10, based on interim estimates. So you've probably heard somebody talking about the water level's going to rise six feet, or that somebody's saying it's going to rise a foot, or whatever it happens to be. If you want to get money from the entities there, you take the middle road, and that's what we shared with you today, all right? So there's a high, there's a mid-high, there's a medium, there's a mid-low, and there's a low. There's five tiers that the feds tasked NOAA to identify, and that's what we used here. So what's important, as you probably know, is that this is going to impact our stormwater system, and there are solutions to address that. But also because we're in an area that there's four tides that we experience day in and day out, there's hydraulic pressure that's impacting our infrastructure each and every day, four cycles. So any of our sanitary sewer that's a gravity feed from our home to a lift station, that's impacted. A few years ago, I don't know if any of you were here, but when we did our last rate study, I think there was about a 5% to 10% loss of water from our system. So we pumped it, we sold it, that water couldn't be accounted for, all right? So that raises a question, where's it going? I don't know if it was ever resolved, but we think that might be contributor or being impacted by this as well. And finally, if you take a look at our power infrastructure, particularly near Wmslow Park, you'll see that the power leads there, as you go to Sand Pebble, they've got a south lean by about 15 degrees. That's been there since Hurricane Irma. Hurricane Irma's winds was a failing Cat I, and it basically ceased over Indate City, so we got those north winds. That infrastructure is all leaning because of the winds that were coming from the north at that time. Well, I was an engineer with GTE for a number of years, and basically if you build infrastructure in sand, in normal sand, you build it in a standard way and you put the basic support that you need. But if it's in a swampy area, because the water tables come up, that construction technique no longer applies. You need to develop it differently. So the key, build it differently. So one of the things that we think here is that a substantial number of parts of our infrastructure could be impacted by these changes that we're seeing over time. So the other thing that was important here that we came across is the National Flood Insurance Program does not cover home damage due to hydraulic pressure. So if water comes up, cracks your foundation, does any of that stuff, they don't care. It only applies if you have a storm with wave action and takes the sand away. So if you don't have sinkhole insurance, your properties are at risk, and you have no insurance coverage from any source based on those types of things. So this applies to our business owners as well. So moving on to page seven. We've shared our learnings and in some ways what we think are some of the grim realities that are in front of us. The good news is that we, as a city, have options and resources to confront the issue. Now the state is just grasping the negative economic impacts, in our view. And near as we can tell, they've only had a kind of a piecemeal approach, so we believe that's to our advantage. We, Port Ritchie, need to decide on what option we want to choose in order to care for the best interests of the residents and businesses of our community. The options are no action, continue to do what we're doing, or potentially an assessment to evaluate protection, accommodation, i.e. increased stormwater capacity, retreat, or avoidance, no development in some areas, as a strategy for the city. This is the way the state and the feds are looking at communities across the country. Because what the state's recommending is what the feds have put in place. So when we discuss seagrass restoration, as part of a dredging effort, for example, with folks at our meetings, it developed a lot of excitement with everyone we spoke with, and I think all of us have had additional meetings with people as well, saying, "Hey, this is really neat stuff." And if we can get people engaged on it, we think we can really go far. So that's why we think that's a key part of what we want to do going forward. So we think that with the right approach and commitment from the city, we can build that same excitement, and we're positioned potentially to be a small model for investment on what restoration and resiliency can be. We're very small, but if we can get our act together and go to the proper entities at the federal and state level, we think we could say, "Hey, we're an open book here. We've been around since 1925 in the heyday of when Florida was developed. We're on the water. We have a river that runs through us. We've got businesses, we have residential, we've been built up over the entire time from the post-war period as far as continued growth. Let's put all our eggs here to see what we can do and what we should do. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, we learn something, but it's at such a small scale because Port Ritchie's so small, it's no great loss. We know not to do it for Jacksonville. We know that we should do this over at Punta Gorda, whatever it happens to be." So we think if we get our act together and get our arms around this to move forward, we can have a unique model that has all the attributes that the state of Florida really wants to see in driving this approach forward. So it will require a great amount of cooperation with other government entities, but we can be a prototype for what could happen, is kind of what we're thinking. So the big challenge, as we see it on page eight, we believe we're at a critical juncture. We think that the path that we've traveled the last 20 to 30 years is not going to float going forward, and we really need to make a decision on what you want for our city in the future. The easiest path is to do nothing. And what we can do, the community can abandon areas, they become economically unviable, and living conditions are untenable. However, if the city followed the state NOAA recommendations in developing an adaption plan, the council would have a basis for determining its strategy, and that's all it is, is a basis to know what we should do or what we shouldn't do. And the plan would define projects that could be undertaken and funded to move forward. And Florida FDEP has an Adaptive Planning Guidebook that provides an easy roadmap to follow. Gone through it, I can make it available to the city manager. I had conversations with FDEP Director of Resilience and Coastal Protection, Alex Reed, about it, and they're gung-ho, they're gung-ho to find somebody that'll do something with it rather than just do the study and put it on a shelf. That's where I think our opportunity comes in. So additionally, Florida DAP is ready to demonstrate their coastal adaption resilience tools, CARP for short, to the city to be used in such an effort. So make a note, Mr. Sossaman, Joe Bauer from DEP is available the week of 11/09 for some training on those tools if we are interested. And I could get the contact information for him if we want to do this. But what I looked at from the approach, it's something we could easily do. It's not that complicated, it's a very detailed roadmap, and these tools are fairly intuitive on how to use. But it paints a picture of what is at risk in your community, and it begs the question, what can we do or what should we do about it? So it'll also provide additional options for us based on what we learned from the assessment, and so let me just walk through the details here. So what we're suggesting is leveraging the adaption planning process developed at the state and federal level. It provides context and community outreach strategies so you can engage your citizens as far as what's important. Additionally, there's another opportunity for the city, is that the county has been trying to get going on this, all right? And I've been staying appraised of where they are on it, and as with the county, you guys may be familiar with, sometimes they don't move as quickly as you may hope they do. But we are invited to a SWAT analysis that they're conducting on October 29th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Starkey Park Environmental Center. So if you're interested in that, we've got two slots. They're encouraging somebody from council and the city manager to participate. This is their effort to try to get traction going, engage the municipalities and other important business players and important people in the community as far as what should they be doing, and they're using this to drive into their comprehensive planning and strategic planning process, okay? So that's an opportunity that's available to us next week. Basically, what the adaption plan does, it looks at the vulnerability, risk analysis, exposure and timing, sensitivity of structures, infrastructure, population, and natural resources. So these tools help you assess what kind of kimchi am I in as far as my community goes. And then from that, you can develop some adaption strategies, what do you want to do? You can take it even a step further, but we believe, at least in the initial stage, just understand what's going on, and then we can figure out where to take it next. And again, ultimately, this ties into our comprehensive capital and stormwater plan. So you can say, "Okay, now I've got a reason to spend X amount of dollars on this particular area or that particular area." And one of the things that we saw through our comp plan is that, as we were looking at it, it appears that there were maybe some fundamental changes, but the core part of the plan is circa 2000. There was a coastal element that was updated at a later point in time, but all the financial numbers are from the 2008 to 2012 timeframe. So it doesn't look like it's maybe as up to date as you may want, so I don't know if anybody's looked at that lately, but I just point that out as a sidebar. So finally, you identify those particular projects and you get funding for them. You may have heard about St. Pete Beach's issue here, if you caught the news the other day, they've got sunny day flooding and that type of thing. They're a little older than we are, they're probably built a little lower than we are, but they're talking about a proposal of coastal protection of adding two and a half feet of seawall to all of their residential areas. They already have problems with their stormwater system. They are doing this in kind of a piecemeal fashion, they really haven't got a cohesive view of what they're trying to do. They hired a consultant, and this is what they're telling them. So we believe that taking a more comprehensive look will be more effective for us in the long term. So now, talked about resources that we have. One of the things on page nine is that we learned is that dredging sand is a potential key resource for the city to use as coastal restoration protection. However, our bids that we've issued today, we're treating sand as a disposable item, haul it off, get rid of it, I don't want to see it, all right? Globally, sand is at a premium, and in fact, there's a competitive market for it. People don't just give it away. People ship it across oceans because they don't have the sand that they need. And I'm not just talking for construction, I'm talking for building, sand barriers, those types of things. So it's important to have sand from a local proximity. And the Army Corps maintains a database of where particular sand is all around our country so they can get the right sand to the right place where they need it for beach nourishment or whatever it happens to be. So the Army Corps did a survey in 2018 of our river, they do it about every five years. And so what we did is our permits identify about 50,000 yards to 81,000 yards of material that were in our permits. The federal channel, if they brought it up to their standard at a nine-foot or an eight-foot overdraft, that would bring 56,000 and 94,000 yards. And the federal channel, in this last survey, they actually extended it two miles to intersect with the intercoastal waterway that's really off Anclot. That could bring in another 65,000, 98,000 yards. And basically, so Port Ritchie could provide somewhere in the order of 171,000 to 273,000 cubic yards of material to the Army Corps. Why is that important? Well, the coastal barrier system ends at Anclot Island. The sandbar, if any of you are boaters, you know that that's been running away. From our conversations at the Army Corps, they know they have an obligation to fix that. They're going to need material to do that. So what we're saying is, let's work the synergies here to utilize that to enhance the coastal barrier system. They win because they don't have to haul sand very far, because I can tell you, a lot of their sand is further offshore, based on their databases. So that's a real asset and a critical resource for us. On page 10, coastal barrier system, we just talked to, that's maintained by Fish and Wildlife System. I couldn't go through the federal stuff, I can't figure out why they're in certain areas, it just is. So I do know Pasco is what they call a tier-one focus, and the, I'm not sure exactly, other than they know they've got to get some sand to us before anybody else. So that was my interpretation, based on the way they were talking about it. It was important in their conversation. It was important in their conversation. So the other part is, is that we know that we've been able to get some Restore Act funding and I think that our funding was out of the direct component. It may or may not be familiar, there's two other components associated with the Restore Act. One is restoration, which is about 30% and the other spill impact is about 30%. So the general, direct component is only 35% of the total. So that's what I think we've seen so far in our tranche of 667. Also mentioned that Swift Mud is dealing with the water quality issues and they're interested in potentially doing something as well as Newport Ritchie and Pasco County. The other piece is the coastal rating system associated with the National Flood Insurance Program is going to come up again in 2024. So that's our next opportunity to kind of improve ourselves from a seven to a five. So we have some time to do that. The downside of that is that there is risk rate reform that's going to take place in 2021. So our citizens are going to get hammered with that before any benefit out of the equation. So we think this is an important goal to engage the community because these folks are not just on the water. These folks are everywhere in the city that have to have flood insurance to get any funding. So everybody benefits if we do this a key way. Another part that we learned is that, and some of you may be familiar, Florida Audubon owns the property on the mouth of the river on the south side. National Audubon, Nature Conservancy are two of the biggest players in making funding available. Nature Conservancy is putting a boatload of money in associated with Louisiana and it's probably the biggest restoration effort in the country at this time. Some things have gone on in Canaveral, you probably hear all kinds of stories about where sand is going, but those are the two larger efforts that are going on. So to, oh, and the last piece that we've also found was that a lot of the universities, University of South Florida, University of Central Florida have marine institutions. They're eager and anxious to engage on these types of things, bringing funding to the equation, doing research associated with it. So these are other resources that could come to the table. So our recommendations are to, on page 11, is to basically really look at anything that we do around dredging as restoration and resiliency and not dredging. And I know there's a, we've let something out as far as a bid for work. I would encourage that we reassess the viability of that if that's what we want to pursue. Because the important piece is it takes money to get money and in our case, right now, we have more money than what Crystal River started with. So if we leverage that appropriately, we might be able to use that as a big multiplier. The permits for dredging are a nice lead in, if you want to call it shovel ready, that's a good thing from our standpoint. Would encourage that we designate a council representative and the city manager to work with us to figure out what this vision is. And it's important that the city leads on this because we can't lead, at least with FDEP and those types of things. So the CART training is really geared towards municipalities and governmental entities. And then also as a initial win to coordinate with Pasco County Stormwater, Newport Ritchie and Swift Mud to take a look at water quality in the river. How big of a problem do we have or don't we have, but we have to start looking at that. That would be a quick win to get your feet wet, your toe wet as far as what could be potentially happen. And then also here that we found to be really effective is community outreach and engagement. Folks are excited about, when you start talking about restoration and seagrass and manatees and better fishing and all of that kind of stuff that goes with, what we're seeing is that it builds some real excitement out there and people want to be there. They want to be in Port Ritchie. They want to be where this type of stuff is happening. It's easier to draw business in because there's a level of excitement that doesn't exist normally. So that's what, those are our kind of pieces associated with the whole dredging component. So if you have any questions or if I'd like to, I'll just reinforce that the more that we dug and the more people we talk to, doing all of these things that we want to do separately, whether it's the county yield or stormwater or if it's us giving, what we're doing is lots of times we're counteracting what the other party is working on if we don't do it consistently. Like if we just dredged a couple of canals, the stormwater is going to bring in this unfiltered stormwater and just fill those canals right back in, right? If we dredge and don't give the river some way to protect itself with seagrass and the way it's supposed to look, then we're just going to have to try to come up with this money for dredging again in 45 years when everything shifts around. And I've relatively been with the city three years, but the permits and all of the information that we got when we started looking into this goes back 20 years and it hasn't been done because we couldn't get funding to it. So if we can scrape together enough funding to do small projects now and then turn around and have to face the same economic hill three years from now, we've done ourselves a huge disservice, right? And, and everybody that we've talked to says the funds are there if you're willing to approach this the right way. The engineering contractor that talked us about Crystal River, the city has put in a tiny amount of that money. They raise money for them in most cases from federal and state dollars. And you see just at the beginning the results of what they've got out of it.
From being on this board probably over 10 years, way back when we started the dredging before we got the permits, I was on the board, the question's always been the funding because it was dredging, 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 funding. Are we going to assess the homeowners and the canals? How are we going to, you know, how are we going to go about it? When the gentleman came up and gave us the presentation on Crystal River, it opened our eyes that there's the funding. It's not about dredging, it's about the restoration. And once you bring that in, the dredging is in there, but the project is about the restoration of the river, all the money comes in that way. And again, when I, when he gave us the presentation and seeing how much Crystal River put into it and what they've gotten out of it for the whole community, the whole city, the businesses and everything, I look at it after being on board for all these years, it's not about dredging. Dredging is almost the bad word. It's all about the restoration and rebuilding the waterways with the seagrass and going that way. And all the funding came in for them. That's what we need to think about.
That was probably our biggest aha moment.
Thank you guys for putting in so much effort. I mean, it actually shows and it's amazing looking at it from a totally different perspective. The roadmap that you were talking about, that I'd love to see, see that put together and we can also down to discuss what steps we can take. Even if they're baby steps, like you said, let's, let's start moving in that direction. I think it makes a lot of sense and these governments and these agencies are willing to help allocate to Crystal River, why not? I mean, leverage is one of my favorite words, so let's leverage what we have and, and get this roadmap put together.
Has any ever been made to reach out to such as USF or UCF or their marine science groups? See if any of them willing to adopt us and, and give us some guidance and?
Have not. I think what we would encourage is we kind of get our act together and then strategically figure out how to do those types of things. We did, we took some liberties as far as getting the spot, you know, queued up, get us a couple of slots, getting some training lined up. But that's why we're really at a, at a point here that the city has to decide, what do you want to do? If you don't want to do this stuff, there's no point in walking down the path. But if we are interested, that's a real, realistic component to reach out to USF or other UCF or there's others as well as far as how can you play here? Because, you know, we have Mr. Sossaman here, we don't have a whole lot of bench strength behind. So that's why our size is a disadvantage, but it can be an advantage as well because we, if we're more nimble than the other guys, because we're not seeing it from the players that have already gone through the whole thing. The Clearwaters, the Lauderdale's, St. Augustine's, they haven't gone further. They've got the pictures of where the problems are, but they really haven't pieced everything together. County is six months back, easy. If we can get out there and set the course, because what we just shared with you tonight is six to nine months ahead of where the county's going to be. So if you guys take advantage of that, we really believe that we could bundle this, if we sit down and kind of figure out what that needs to be, we can take it places and get the funding before anybody else taps into it in areas that we're not even fathing yet. Because this, from the conversation I had at the state level, they are desperate for somebody to come forward and say, hey, these are the kind of things that need to be done. And as part of that, we can get some expertise that says, hey, you know what, that stormwater thing isn't going to work that way, all right? But you know what, this way over here is really going to be a good idea. So let's try that in Port Ritchie, okay?
And some of the conversations like Carl said, it reflected what we need, I guess, one, we need the sponsorship and the yes to it. We also need somebody at the council to be a part of those conversations, probably along with the city manager. But, but we've engaged with people that would be in AFRS, the environmental company that's doing the bulk of the work at Crystal River. They told us, if you said, well, this is something you're interested in doing, we'll hold your hand and they give the people the checkbooks and talk to you about what that, building that plan would look like, right? So it's, the enables are there, but to reach out to UCF or USF for us, for the board without knowing that we've got just backing of the city, much less, you know, any broader support than that, it was premature for us to have concrete competition.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What is the first step that we need to take as a council and to, to move forward in this? I mean, we apparently have to start the process, so what's the first step that we have to take?
I would say, and I don't know, Mr. Sossaman has seen this or any of you have seen this, but this adaptive planning process, it's a very simple four-step process. Take a look at this, we could sit down if you would like and, and go through it and kind of find out what it means, okay? And in that, literally there's a step-by-step plan. I would encourage, we just take that, okay? And then start going down and figuring out what we need to do. Let's sit down and I figured out these CART tools, they're pretty straightforward. If you put those together, you make nice, pretty pictures that you can show to FDEP or NOAA or whoever's got the funding and they'll go, wow, you guys really have figured this out because you've thought about all the things that are going into this puzzle. Nobody else has done that. That's where I think our really advantage is, is we need to sit down, because we're small, and kind of figure out those pieces and part of that plan, and these are the steps we're going to go through, then I think that's what we end up.
So what are you wanting from this council? The permission to go ahead and start doing this or?
If one of you want to get involved and do that with Mr. Sossaman and PAB, we think, and I don't know who else, again, what other bench strength we can draw on, but in some ways, candidly, if we don't do this, we won't have to worry about a number of things. So we think we ought to have a full court press, frankly.
Well, one of the problems that we face is a small city in all reality is we have very limited resources. So part of what needs to be done on an administrative level, we just don't have. You've got one city manager, a few city employees that are in administration and the amount of work it would take to do this is kind of beyond the scope of what we have for employees. One of the other issues that I see or problems that I see, and I'll start with problems and I'll go to the, to the plus sides of the things, okay? I'm very familiar with Crystal River, been there, been boating, kayaking. Different area in terms of its Three Sisters Springs, you have all these natural springs, very clear water. And last time I was there, I must have seen 2,000 kayakers that were all rentals, okay? So it's a different in terms of the amount of revenue they bring in. It's probably apples to oranges to what we have and we're not kayakers, we have shrimping boats and stuff going on. So the, the type of tourism and this type of industry is a little bit different. One of the other things that I've done from the mayor position is I've had kind of an advantage over some other people because I've been invited to go to county meetings and meetings with Swift Mud officials and some of these officials. And I can tell you that I was with Swift Mud, the president and all the, the management. Jack Mariano was there, big map of Port Ritchie and some of the other areas. And there's a lot of litigation that's already happened in terms of the bad word, the dredging word, where you had Hillsborough County Tampa, Hillsborough River, St. Pete, there's been a lot of litigation about whether or not Swift Mud and some of these agencies will quote-unquote dredge. And when it comes to box canals, which is a lot of what our city's needs are, the answer's absolutely not. They've rejected the stormwater, they've rejected all these other things, it's gone through litigation and it's kind of a dead stick in terms of funding. That having been said, let me switch to the positives. When you're talking about restoration, our city and our issues are a little bit different. When you look at our bayou, for example, the problem with that bayou and the pollution is the water's just not moving. It's coming in and it's stagnant towards the end of the bayou. So Swift Mud kind of, when I was there, said that, no, we would never dredge box canals, but we, what we might do at some point in time is if you had some kind of project where you were running pipes to, from the bayou out to the ocean to filter water to improve water quality or where Winslow Park is, for example, there's, it used to, actually the water used to flow in and out of Winslow Park, which is now closed just through natural means and sand. They said, those are the types of projects that we might engage in that would open up water flow and so on and so forth. So the problem that we have is if as a city we want to dredge, that's a different area. We're talking about box canals. The argument from many county official, county officials that were advanced were, hey, it's stormwater and some of these are some of the issues, water clarity. Those arguments have been rejected by DEP and Swift Mud and some of those agencies. If your goal is to say, hey, we want to improve water quality and move some of the water and, and engage in those types of projects that are environmental projects, that I think there would be funding for. The problem is, is I don't know if we went down that road, if you would ever have any funding for actual dredging. It would be, you know, to, to move water in a different manner, but it wouldn't accomplish what a lot of the homeowners want, a lot of our citizens want, which is the dredging. So that's, I think, where we kind of run into a challenge or a problem. Crystal River is different. When you go down those main channels, which you're talking about seagrass and dredging, those are common channels that everybody uses and they're natural waterways, no different than our river. Our issue is our river's pretty good, doesn't it? I don't know if we need to dredge the main river, but I think if you had common areas like that, that needed to be dredged, for example, Restore Act money for Channel One, which is where all our commercial fishing boats come in and out and it links the park and the boat ramp, you know, we have some funding for that and I think that's doable. The problem is, is when you start getting into this 20-plus residential box canals, that's where we run into a problem in terms of funding. So what we may want to do is kind of organize, what can we actually get funding for that may not entail dredging, but other water quality issues versus dredging and, and I think we have to ferret those issues out realistically, probably to get some of that funding.
Carl, if I can.
Sure.
You're asking the same questions and in the same way largely that we did of the environmental firm when we got to that point. And, and the first thing to be addressed was the water flow through the bayou, right? And the way that, that does not flush the way that it was intended to with construction and everything around it. He immediately said that would be something you'd either have to clear out and, and have a way for water to flush out of the bayou in multiple directions.
Or you pipe underneath.
Either pipe underneath or you've already got a channel that goes out the other way.
Correct.
Potentially direct water that way, but he said you have to address that. But with the, with the idea of the box canals, the water quality and the restoration is directly tied to what's in those canals and how they flush. And in Crystal River, you do have residential canals off of there and they had to address the water quality and what was in those canals to address what was in the river and Kings Bay. So same questions, but it was part of a larger initiative and it wasn't just... And it wasn't just, we need to dredge and we need to address water quality. If you're trying to do one or the other, you're not gonna accomplish either.
But, but my point is, is I think the focus should be on water quality and not dredging. The focus should be on moving the water through Miller's Bayou, and that should be the focus if we're looking for that type of funding.
But that's only one piece.
Sure.
It's a holistic approach.
Yes.
Right.
That's right.
So, for instance, in the box canals, the sediment comes in and there's nothing to flush out of every box canal. So you can dredge them all day long, they're gonna fill up every five years, every 10 years, no matter what. The idea is, you dredge out the box canals once you install seagrasses, part of the restoration. That cleans, and the seagrass actually just cleans and traps the sediment. That's why everyone says, oh, wow, there's clear water. Yeah, because the seagrass is trapping and dropping it down right into the grain, and then the seagrass keeps growing up a lot slower. And it's a natural filter all the way through. That's why my canal, or the canal where I live, doesn't fill up as fast as everyone else, because I have all that seagrass that's actually stopping the debris from coming into that canal, even though I have a dead-end box canal. It's a holistic approach all the way through.
That's right.
You have to open up Miller's Bayou, you have to flush out Miller's Bayou, you have to install seagrass in the Miller's Bayou, so you clarify it and start dropping it all through.
Right.
It's, it's getting the ecosystem basically back and back. And that's where, you don't even use the word dredging, because all the connotation for dredging is, oh, I'm taking, getting soil out per owner way, or whatever the case may be. Now, for the instance, for our, all of our box canals, strike a deal with the US Army Corps. Hey, you guys wanna replenish the Anclot Sandbar? Take our sand. They pay, they pay for the dredging, they'll probably take it out if it's an amenable sand to them, and if it's the sand they need, or they'll patrol you to it. And then you use other funding for restoration to put back in.
But, but the problem you have is, that sand isn't the type of sand they want. They want clearwater beach sand.
How do you know that?
Because we've tested our sand, we know it's toxic. Has arsenic in it.
It has traces of arsenic, yeah.
Sure, that's not what, that's not what to...
We've only tested two canals.
What, do you think the sand's gonna change?
There's only two canals that have been tested. So how can you speak for all the canals throughout unless you start asking the question?
So you...
Say, I test one canal, and, oh my God, it's arsenic, I can't touch any of the canals, is going down the wrong path.
Yeah, but realistically, in your opinion, you think that the sand is gonna change between Channel 18 and Channel 17, for example?
How do you know you didn't have a bad test? That's why they tested when they actually pulled out the sand again, they retested to see how contaminated it is.
Well, let's put it this way, we've never had a test recently that's anything other than, has to go to a...
You haven't had a test recently.
Well, the last ones that were done, all had to go to the class, whatever landfill. So that's what you're dealing with.
Class A.
Class A landfill, correct.
Until you start asking the questions and looking into it, it's easy to say no. I can say no all day long. Until you start asking the questions, then we're never gonna go with it.
Yeah, but how much, in terms of resources, do you want to spend to get to that no? I guess that's the question, if that's what's gonna be...
So you're going in with the no. You're starting at no and confirming your no.
Well, we've been no before, so...
We've been no for 20 years, we haven't gotten anywhere.
Correct.
So we'll stay at no and go nowhere for another 20 years.
Well, you can expend resources and move it forward, but the question is, do you want to spend those resources? That's the crux, that's, that's the crux of the issue, the crux of the problem.
What resources are they asking for right now, other than one council person and one other person to start asking some questions?
Well, that's time, that's time and resources. How many lunes do you have in the city? You have one. So, you start opening up Pandora's Box, and you start expending resources, and I'm not talking about money, resources that we're paying money out, but even employees' time, which we have limited employees in the city, it starts adding up. And I'm not suggesting we shouldn't go forward, but what I'm suggesting is, I think we have to be careful and really gauge what we're using for resources versus what we expect to get. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but we have to be cognizant of the resources that we're gonna expend to go on down the road.
Well, I'm pretty good with resources. I'll throw my hat into the ring for the liaison, and we'll see where it goes from there.
The key, I think, is the holistic approach. And the other thing that I would suggest is that the state doesn't have their act necessarily together on water quality, for example. There is not agreement on what good or not good. And I think if there can be enough pieces brought to the table on things that you want to address, I think that'll cause enough of a tilt with the powers that be to say, okay, we should say yes, because of all of the pieces that you're talking about. It's that one-dimensional component that doesn't float, and it hasn't floated anywhere because that's how everybody's approached it. What we're suggesting is approach it a different way, more comprehensively than anybody else that we can see has done, this has only been out there for a few years, and I would submit, nobody's figured it out. If we can get the right mousetrap built, there's a shot that maybe we get the yes on more than we even imagined. But if we don't take the step, we won't get there.
And I guess my suggestion was, is that the motive, the motive for our city shouldn't be just the dredging, but should be the water quality, the water flow, so on and so forth. I understand it's a holistic approach. But I think that one of the things that we're gonna have to do at some point is have an engineering study to figure out what's gonna have to happen. That's where the resources are gonna kind of kick in.
Meg, stop your first...
Go ahead.
I would not pay an engineering company to come do it, because it's all greenfield. They have no clue. I would submit, we can leverage state and other resources that will want to play, because they don't know yet, and the institutions, we were talking about, USF and UCF, they want to figure that out. I think if we're smart about this, we can get this taken care of, because we're so small, and everybody will want to help to figure it out. That's the bet that we're playing.
The last thing you want to do is bringing in an engineer right now, a consulting engineer, to tell you what you can or can't do. Let's wait a month or two, figure it out, put together and start asking some questions, see what's really necessary, before you start bringing in an engineer at $250 an hour to tell you, well, maybe you're right.
The questions are here. What do you think? What do you think? You guys live here, right? What do you think? What's important? What's not important? Those are things that the Adaption Planning Effort talks about. Get that kind of input. What people, what do people have the intestinal fortitude to do? If they don't, then you have that answer too. We're not gonna do that. We can't see that happen. Okay, fine, but you know the answer then.
And I would say this, you know, the river quality is not what it should be, right? When you talk to folks that, you know, old timers that lived here a long time ago, Miller's Bayou was covered in grass, and that river was clear. So the, the idea that the river is stained so dark that you can't see your hand a foot down, it's not what it's supposed to look like, right? It's a water quality issue overall. We have arsenic in some of our canals, and the sand is toxic, because the river's not protecting itself, it's getting worse, right? So, I would probably agree, if we had tests done and the quality of what was there was bad, probably hasn't gotten better. But it's gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better.
Correct, but I agree, but I think the solution is water flow and not necessarily dredging.
Hundred percent agree. And just the folks that did the work at Crystal River, when they came and talked to us, they said, you just need to stop talking about dredging. The dredging will get done, because it's part of the water quality, and then, then you don't have, you know, that's why Carl's recommendation in here, our recommendation is, we just stop talking about it as dredging. The dredging gets done as part of the water flow, which is part of the water quality, and it's part of the bigger picture. But if we just try to get money for dredging, we're just, we're gonna be able to do a couple of canals, and we're gonna have to turn around and do them again. The ones that are the real problem, the water isn't washing in from the, you know, from the Gulf, the water's coming from the county somewhere and just getting dumped there. And every time we dredge that canal out, it's just gonna get redumped.
When we talked to Mr. Miller, he came and gave the presentation, he talked about even the drainage coming from the streets, and how they have basins, and they put those in the play to stop the water coming off of the street stills with the, the pollution and everything coming in. I know he told us, and I have his card here, again, Carl mentioned it, he'd be glad to sit down with the city and help them through this whole process. Okay, so there's your guy you'd want to meet with to start, to get the project rolling, and he'll, step by step. I mean, they worked with the senator, all these other groups, and now, he was the one who charged the project at Crystal River. If he's gonna offer to come in and help the city, why not take him up? Here's his card. Instead of doing, you know, hiring another engineering firm, I mean, again, I've been here forever, I don't know how many times we've spent engineering to come in and check the canals and the depth, and they checked this and that, another $200, $300,000, all the permits and everything. And here it is, how many years later, 15 years later, we've done nothing.
No, I agree, but I think when you're talking water quality, one of the problems that we have is, you have, from where we stand as Port Ritchie, if you look what the county's done, they've taken the water from basically all the way over where Moon Lake is, pushed it all the way down Ridge Road, through where the golf course was, Magnolia Valley, and the plan is to kind of push it through Port Ritchie and just dump it out into the river and into the, to the...
But that's where SWIFTMUD comes in.
So, no, I understand, but...
But they don't want that either.
No, because...
It's their money to solve the problem of dumping that water into our canal.
Because I don't see how taking all that water, running it over 19, where there's a million cars every day, and dumping it in the bayou's gonna help us. Where, when you look at Crystal River, one of the things they have working for them is, if you look around, it's not a densely populated area, once you get in off the water, and there's not a whole lot of traffic moving up and down, you know, 19 right there, it's a much more, I guess, rural area, so...
They're bigger than we are.
But they're spaced out, like here, we're packed in pretty good. But when I looked, I didn't see the, I didn't see where they had all that runoff going in the river either, looking, because I looked, I looked at the infrastructure when I've been there, so...
The calming piece that Ronnie's talking about, it's everybody's problem, because that's the way we build stormwater, and that's how we dealt with it.
Sure. But, but what the city's done historically is, our water runs north, and then dumps out past where the Salt Springs is, where the water moves pretty good out into the Gulf. And with all that water movement, you don't get the pollution. Here, you know, with the water not moving in Miller's Bayou, or in Winslow Park, for example, it's much harder to filter when you've got stuff coming off of 19 into there, it's just, it's just gonna pollute.
The water falling all up and down the coast has been, been reduced over the past 30 years, regardless of where you're at. Clearwater used to be absolutely crystal clear, it's not anymore 30 years later.
Correct.
You talk to any old timer, you're saying we're pushing the water north, we're reducing the water quality through the salt springs and all.
No, I understand that.
So, it's not just water moving, you can move water all day long. It is a holistic approach, like they said, where you have to actually restore the vegetation, restore the way it was, stop pollution from runoff, street runoff and that sort of thing. It is much more holistic than just moving water, there's no one solution. That's why, part of the intrigue for me, at least, is we are a small city, we make decisions very quickly, ironically, sometimes, that we, that we are able to move with. That is probably, from a marketing perspective, very interesting to these various groups, because we can make a decision fairly quick. Again, the exposure, you know, our overall coastal line is very tiny compared to other areas, so their investment is very small to see if something works or doesn't work.
Right.
And that's part of the marketing potential that we have. It's not gonna take, I mean, we did quick calculations, if we were to dredge every, every channel we have, it was like $9 million, right? Adding, in the grand scheme of things, that's a drop in the bucket. It's huge to us, agreed, but to a federal government, to US Army Corps engineer, they probably lose $9 million in a given year to rounding errors. That's part of the intrigue, that they would probably look very favorably on the city to try some of this stuff. Will it all work? Maybe, maybe not. But, at least one, if we improve the quality of Miller's Bayou through grants or whatever, if we are able to sell sand to Army Corps so they can replenish Army Corps, because really, it's arsenic, arsenic is a naturally occurring...
No, I got it, it's natural, right.
They bury it, they cap it, they don't worry about it. Army Corps can do that, we can't do that. And that's where that all kind of starts coming together a little bit. That's why this is very intriguing to me, from an ability to actually move forward, improve water quality. If you have, and again, this is the blue-sky approach, if you have crystal clear Miller's Bayou with seagrass that's dredged down and people can swim in it, if you have canals that are deep enough and clear with seagrass that people can see the bottom off, just from a marketing perspective and an overall home value perspective, wow, I'm going to Port Ritchie because the water's clean, I can see the bottom. I can't even see the bottom in Clearwater anymore. That's a whole kind of different marketing perspective than just, oh, I'm gonna dredge the canal, I'm gonna see sand on the bottom and it fills up. And if we can get somebody else to pay for it, because we're so small, or even pay the majority of it, what the hell have we gotten to lose?
Yeah, I think that we totally take advantage of all that free handholding that they're offering us. I mean, if they're gonna guide us through, we don't basically have to spend a penny until we get some real solid answers on the direction we're going. And ask the questions, let us get the questions, so let us put it together and ask the questions. If these people want to help us guide us through the process, like I said, we're not, there's not an outlay upfront, where, until we get to a certain point, obviously, that makes sense. But, I mean, things like Army Corps engineers, Miller's Bayou doesn't drain, because all the guys are looking at the old plots, but it used to go under the Bay Boulevard Bridge behind there, and there was a canal that ran all the way back out to Bratcher Park. And when they, when they dredged those last canals, they closed that...
They closed it out, right, correct.
So nothing will flush anymore. That would be the first platform that Army Corps engineers to open that back up, because that makes sense. But like I said, if there's people willing to hold our hand, to walk us through the process, I say, let them guide us to a point where we say, let's go with it or let's not. I mean, it's, if they're offering to do this, like you said, these guys are, and I agree with Todd, when he said, if we're such a small city, that on the scale of funding, we're nothing. I mean, what we think is, you know, lunge our whole city for a year is a drop in the bucket for them. So, I'm all for asking for help, I'm all for handholding and guidance, and see where it takes us. I mean, I understand your perspective as well, but until we start laying out cash, let's, let's let them direct us and see where we go with this, because it sounds to me like it's a win-win for the whole community, if we can get it to go holistically like we're talking.
We don't know how far it can go, but we know we can't take it ourselves any further.
Well, we already have volunteer, so it's just got to work. So, and I can rotate with you when I'm not on the...
We'll figure it out.
So, yep, we'll figure it out. And I'm sure Len can make some of those meetings as well, if he needs to. So, I just, like I said, I think, if somebody offers to give you a helping hand, let's, let's take the helping hand and see where it leaves us, and then we can make the decision after that.
And if we can, we won't write any checks.
No, I got you.
Okay. All right, so, I guess what I could do is reach out to Len and Todd?
Yeah, I mean, you reach out to Len, well, us, you know, and, you know, the other thing I was thinking, maybe we establish, like, from a council meeting perspective, an update, an ability to update the rest of the council and the citizens where we are on this, even if we make it, I don't know, monthly or whatever timeframe, that we have a small report, to just kind of update and generate that excitement.
I think, once you have the blueprint, then it'll be easy to let people in on, here's where we are, step two, step three, we're moving in that direction. So, I think that's a great idea, but again, I'm all for taking a helping hand, so, let's reach out and take it and see where it leaves us. Like you said, we don't have to write any checks until we get to a point where we determine, maybe we should go that direction.
I think it's gonna be a whole lot easier to change the mindset of the community away from dredging to restoration, and get, create an excitement around that, a lot easier, because we can get some funds, and we can get help, and we can get a hand to get this done.
I agree.
If we can get our residents to just think, we're gonna change the quality of the water, the fishing off of my dock is gonna be great, the water's gonna be clear when we go out, and we're gonna see more amenities, we're gonna see more birds, we're gonna see more wildlife, we're gonna see more activity.
Possibly.
Won't the flushes that helps?
The flushing would, you know, getting that flushing would make a big deal. I mean, if we can create that excitement with our people, if they understand what we're trying to do, and if we get a side effect of dredging, which that sounds like what this could be if the cooperative, cooperation is done, more power to us, you know? And I think it'll help everybody out in the end and it won't be that sole responsibility on the resident or the city or the county to dredge the water for something that is going to have to be redone in ten years. We have to create the foundation, we have to create the way that the water has to flow to keep that open. So, I think we can create an excitement with the residents and I think that would be the best thing to do is to move forward until we have to spend money, and then we'll work on that. In fact, we'll have fundraisers, we'll sell hamburgers.
Let's see how much it's even required, because you had mentioned that Crystal River is running off less than what we have.
Lot less.
We're currently spending on dredging, so, you know, I'm looking at the investment, let's put down the road, forget about it. I'm not spending any money, but let's say it's five hundred thousand dollars. If that generates enough income to dredge or whatever, or restore water quality, it's a minimal investment overall.
I guess one of the things that I noted when I talked to, like, Swift Mud officials is they've done restoration and those improved water quality improvements, for example, on the Hillsborough River. But what they said, and they also did on the Anklow, the main river going out, there was a lot of that funding for, some of the stuff they did there was for water quality and part of that was dredging, but none of it was for box canals, and they made it very clear, we may dredge or help dredge a river or something like that to open up water quality, but they made it pretty clear that when it got to getting to the box canals, no way, not going to happen. So, that was kind of the, what I was trying to tell you is that that's already been kind of addressed by some of the people that I've spoken to. And that's why I'm not saying I'm a naysayer, I'm just saying that if we're really saying, hey, we want to improve water quality, I think that's there, I think that can happen.
Here's the argument, Swift Mud may say no, they're probably right, they really don't, don't stop stormwater management from a box can, doesn't happen. But if Army Corps of Engineers, different entity, they talk to each other occasionally, they don't talk to each other, but if they say, well, you know what, I'll take all the same you can give me because I want to replenish Anklow, let's forget about the arsenic or all that situation right now. That's a different entity, that's a different replenishment, and that's a different pot of money. So, although Swift Mud may say no, US Army Corps of Engineers says, give me all the same you can get and I'll take all hundred thousand. Of course, they may all say no, you don't know that, but until you start asking around and kind of poking them and seeing what they want to do...
If we can get our fingers in separate pots.
And that's what it really is.
Yeah, that's what I mean, if we get our hands in several pots, maybe...
Give them, give each entity the project payment.
I'm just saying I'm skeptical about the box canals when you're talking about Miller's Bayou or the river itself. I'm pretty comfortable with that, I think that's doable, so...
I don't want to hold us back.
It's how you sell it to who do you sell it to.
One of the shocks I had was Housing and Urban Development are even involved with this. I mean, I would have never thought, but they're a pot of money that we could potentially go... So, anyway, we've got a whole list that I can work with Mr. Sossman on. So, if we're okay with where we're going to go forward here for right now, we're aware of, there's a training session that's available from DEP, there's the Pasco County piece. We wanted to at least bring up the waterway safety component because there was a bunch of activity this weekend that kind of got everybody's attention, so we thought we ought to let you know. And also, we just had a meeting with Newport Ritchie on the waterway safety piece, and they were very eager to do some things as well. So, had met with their chief of police and their marine patrol person and assistant city manager over there, and they want to start making some progress because their folks along the waterway are driving them absolutely bonkers, including the city council over there, about all the wake noise and those types of things. This weekend here, we had some issues, I think, same old, same old. People weaving through traffic, there was something on Facebook here that my wife pointed out to me about some dock that was completely trashed from wake in Moonlight Bayou. So, we had, yesterday, they were in and out, rocking and rolling through that and had loud noise in the evening. I think Chris had witnessed some more traditional body functions occurring in the river area, and we still don't have any progress on it. So, we needed to understand what does the city want to do along this. We had spoke with Chief Robinson and Captain Cough about it. They were motivated, but not necessarily fully as embracing as what we saw in Newport Ritchie. So, I need to understand what the city or council wants in this arena because I can tell you, we're as excited as people were about hearing about water quality restoration, this is operational immediate, and people are pissed off, frankly, across the board, so.
One of the things we had come up with is, a lot of people say, well, where's the patrol, marine patrol out on the water, tickets, this and whatever, a lot of it's education. This summer or during the pandemic, if you talk to any marina, they sold out every boat, motor, everything, and everybody's out on the water.
They're all new boaters.
All new boaters, you have no education, they buy a boat, they get the keys, they launch it, they take off. Have no idea what a no wake sign is, what they are supposed to do. So, I think a lot of it is education, so that's what we talked Chief Robinson with, and then we talked to Newport Ritchie, we'd like to do some kind of educational program. I think Carl met with the Coast Guard, who was willing to put it on, where that we could hold it between the cities, find a place to hold a monthly free educational, put on by the Coast Guard for people who move. Put something up on the launches, next park, where we launch, about it, maybe have a flyer, a rack of flyers there, something that the police, if they did pull somebody over that was doing something, say, hey, here, you might want to go to this free educational voting, okay? Put a sign up on the ramp that basically says what a no wake is. Where is the no wake? If you launch it from Nix, where is it? It goes from here to there, and this is what it means, okay? Because you can write tickets all day long, and of course, we can't put a patrolman out there all day long, okay? So, a lot of it is education, and there is no education. They don't do it when you buy a jet ski, they don't buy it when you go boat or anything. So, talking with Newport Ritchie, talking with the Coast Guard, they're on board for something. So, we're trying to get also Port Ritchie involved, so that at least we're working together, Newport Ritchie and Port Ritchie, I think we share the same objective. The same boaters that come flying out of the, down there by Main Street are the same ones that come to the city of Port Ritchie. So, working together, even as the police marine units. Maybe one weekend you do it, one weekend you do it, certain hours, sharing budgets. They're up for something, Carl met with them.
Right.
We just, again, would like to bring it up to the council and see if that's another initiative we can be going. Education and also working with the other Newport Ritchie as far as some pot of water to help citizens.
I think getting together with them is a great idea, because we've got nothing, once again, nothing to lose doing that. As far as signage, I guess we could come to a consensus on what signs we want to post where. And as far as classes go, they rotated too, someplace on our side, we'll come on their side, back and forth. I think it's a good idea, like you said, they're all new boaters, I've seen them out there all the time, and nobody has a clue what they're doing, you know, the channel marks mean, they don't know much of anything.
We're looking to set up a meeting with Newport Ritchie Marine Patrol on getting some bones on what this looks like, signage. We've shared with some ideas, but getting the whole package, if you will, on this. We haven't set up the meeting yet, but if we want to be engaged on that, we can, so...
Send me a message, I'm available on...
And you should approve the sheriff's office.
We talked about that. I don't know how the relationship here with the sheriff is, but it's not necessarily smooth everywhere. So, the thought was a preference to get Port Ritchie and Newport Ritchie in harmony and then to go to the sheriff's office. And part of the rationale was, the chief works for the city manager, chief there works for the city manager, and the sheriff is a completely separate entity except for the financial standpoint. So, it's much easier to influence the outcome at the city level versus at the county level.
Yeah, it's the first step.
So, that was the first step. So, we're looking at this as, okay, we'll take one step at a time, we'll walk through it. That was the counsel we got from Newport Ritchie.
And Coast Guard already agreed to, they have the whole program, so they were...
They'll do the presentation.
We just have to decide what we want.
Right.
Again, it doesn't cost us anything, knowledge is a good thing, so...
It's just coordination and getting people...
We just don't have the same level of traction here, so...
So, who has to coordinate all this between the cities and all that?
Well, we've been coordinating, but I would say the enthusiasm from our police department was not the same level as we got from the Newport Ritchie Police Department. So, I'm okay with that, but if that's not what you want, then we need a little bit more encouragement.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is if they want to hold classes, and what you're asking for the city is for a venue, hey, we're going to do it at City Hall here, City Hall there.
That's one piece.
Sure.
The other piece is where Will was going, Mr. Dittmar was going, as far as signage, what information you want available, literally down to the, when you're in your vessel and are ove two on the river, what do you want that officer to do? Work, our counsel is, we don't want you to thump them straight away. What we'd like you to do is educate them on what no wake is, or where the zones are, and that type of thing, and just having to... So, there's an approach that we think may be more effective here to get people in line.
A free class is cheaper than a ticket.
That's our thought.
The only thing we know is, and from being on the river, I've been there twenty-two years, is we know the times. It's Saturday and Sunday from three to six.
Right.
The worst time. If you shared that with Newport, with the Newport Ritchie, and you shared the time, one weekend they're out there, the next weekend you're out there, that's six hours a weekend. Once you're out there and people start to know you're out there, it'll stop, okay? And you have the education for the boaters. But right now, it's a wild, wild business.
Yeah, but I think our, I've seen our boat unit and Newport Ritchie's quite a bit.
Right.
That's just recent, though.
Since I've been on the river, I've been right on the river, so I'm assuming coming up...
But it's the time they go out. If they go out at nine o'clock in the morning, okay, on a Saturday or Sunday, that's great. They go out, they go out in the Gulf.
They go to Dern Key.
Lights are in the river, the boat should never leave the river, okay? Because everybody's complaining about no wake in the river. Once you get outside the river, you've got FWC, you've got the sheriff, you've got Coast Guard out there, okay? And if they go out at nine o'clock in the morning and they come back at twelve, one o'clock in the afternoon, the traffic doesn't start coming in till three, and they've been out there drinking all day till three to six. So, it's not just the presence, it's when they're out there. Again, there's not a lot of hours they need to be out there between the two, Port Ritchie and Newport Ritchie, if you shared one weekend, one patrol, the other weekend. We're not looking to put a big expense on the budget for the sheriff out there, it's the time they're out there.
No, I understand, because even the guys that aren't on boats, those are the same times that Nix Park is crazy. So, that's where our police officers are, I drive by and I see them out there, and they're breaking up fights at the boat ramp because people are fighting to get their boats in and out because they've been drinking all day. So, I mean, I see that, I understand that, but I don't know how our police department could do much better in terms of, I see them out there at those times and I see them talking to these people and working with them already, I guess is what I'm getting at. Now, I think the educational program is great. If you have the Coast Guard come in and you're going to have City Hall here versus City Hall in Newport Ritchie and allow educational classes, that's really, I don't think, any burden on the city other than just opening City Hall for people, where the Coast Guard do their thing, but, you know, some of this stuff on the river is just going to happen, and I think that we've already dealt with some of the issues, but...
And I would say that the traffic on the river and just saying that it's just going to happen, I don't find that acceptable.
No, in terms of the volume of people.
No behaviors.
But that should be patrolled the exact same way as any one of our streets, and it gets more traffic, quite frankly, than most of our streets did on Saturday or Sunday afternoon.
Yeah, but that's still a matter of resources, we don't have a boat out there all the time.
Well, again, it goes back to the time.
Sure.
But if we coordinated better, and I guess what we're asking from the council is, can we get the support through the police department, right? Can we get the two police departments to coordinate when they're going to be out there? Because I occasionally, maybe once a month, see both boats out at the same time. Most of the time, I don't see any presence on the water, not on the water four Friday. And I don't see any presence at all on the water. If they were coordinated at peak times, then people would get the idea, hey, if I go around the S curve, there's going to be a police boat there. There was one day the last three times I came around here on Saturday, I'm going to be better at what I'm doing.
In my other point, I've seen police boats out there, and I still see a lot of the nonsense going on as they're stopping people and trying to enforce these rules. So, I'm saying, even if you enforce it, there's still going to be that element to a certain extent. Not that I'm saying it's acceptable, I'm just saying it's there, okay? That was my point.
Yeah, I would.
Okay. But the other problem from the council is we don't really dictate specifically what the police department's going to do and not do. I mean, we control budgets. So, from our perspective, if we say, hey, we want to patrol more, then we say, all right, well, we're going to dedicate more money and then have more money for the police department for that purpose.
And I think the police boats have been upgraded and fixed and operationalized and tested, so one step is the right direction.
I don't think we're, you know, citizens are asking for more presence out there. It's just when they're going to be out there, if you're going to put a boat out there, put it out at the right time. Saturday and Sunday from three to six. Otherwise, don't bother going out because that's when everybody's coming into the park. And again, if you share with Newport Ritchie, if it's six hours one weekend, it's zero the next, that's not a lot of time for your marine patrol unit to be out on the water, but it's at the most effective time.
No, I understand.
I think part of the other issue is, and I don't travel that river that much, how much does Newport Ritchie come into Port Ritchie, or marine units?
A lot, they're there all the time.
So, they're legally moving?
Yep.
I believe that that boat goes out into the Gulf, so...
No, but the hot spot's kind of out in front of Sunset Marina because it's just, you've got a lot of volume coming from all directions, so...
From Nix Park all the way to...
Yeah, because they're back up to the...
Correct.
That's the main strip right there. And then Newport Ritchie has a problem when they go all the way up, coming in, usually all the way to Main Street.
Get back to the Nix Park.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a serious problem. Basically, it's like having a block party in your neighborhood all the time. I mean, we're having the noise, I think if we were driving by any one of your houses, cranking up the stereo and stuff like that, it would not be acceptable. That's what we're hearing from boats. And if I was out gurneting in your yard, I probably wouldn't think too highly of it. But that's what's happening in our yards.
I don't think we need the education for that part, that should be a...
I wasn't going to demonstrate, but I mean, I think this is what is frustrating with people that we're talking to.
Those people, you can just thump right away with a ticket, because that's not how education should be done.
So, that's the mag two. It's no different than when we came to you initially talking about it. It hasn't changed, and in some ways, it's gotten worse. And we've got new people in the, that have moved in or seen this.
Yeah, but as the county grows and more people dump their boats in Nix Park and more people go down the river, the problem's not going to get better, it's going to get worse, just because of the volume of boaters going through.
It's not necessarily true. I've been on the water my whole life, and when there's a police presence, people tend to watch what they're doing more. So, they do it. If there's, you know if there's a car at the end of the street, you're flying down the road, you know he's down there? Typically, everybody slows down. That's why they put a car in the middle of the median without a top on it. I mean, because it slows people down.
The public community is very close knit and they talk. There's tickets, and they know that every weekend between... There's tickets and they know that every weekend between 3 and 6, there's gonna be some kind of presence in the river. The word's gonna get out and you're gonna watch things calm down because someone gets a ticket for doing something in that river. When they go out to the Anklow Island or the Sandbar somewhere else, we get on Facebook, it's gonna be all over the place, watch the river. They got patrols out there every Saturday, Sunday between certain amount of time. And it will stop and it will slow down. But being there 22 years on the river, I hardly ever see anybody get a ticket. Only on the holidays it's FWC. Other than that, forget it.
Right. So.
Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay.
We know it's a long two hours, but we sincerely appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
I have to commend you all for your research, your dedication to this. No, I get a bird's eye, you're the shenanigans.
I bet you do.
Todd, if you're interested in going to that SWAT workshop, you need to go online to the Pasco County.
You need to SWAT and research. We need pre-reading.
Most of the research is.
For like some online data for that, but you've got to build a pre-reading.
Okay.